Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. It's August 1st, 2004. Welcome, everyone. Let's start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please. Okay. We've got a quorum. So we will do some of this business, but I'm thinking, since we are missing a fair number of people, that we may want to wait on the street and sidewalk ordinance. Plus, we just got some new materials.
They want to wait what?
Wait on the the street and sidewalk ordinance kind of discussion. So with that in mind, the approval of the agenda is...
Want to motion to amend the agenda by removing that item?
I think we can talk about a little bit, but just... Yeah, sorry, I set that up wrong. We will move to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Sherman, okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay, no public comment, no one on the Zoom? So, new business? So, we talked last time about looking at street and sidewalk ordinance and the select board's okay with that. Bill, there was... You've given us a lot of materials and there was some action by the select board that pertains to some of this.
Yeah, the Highway Committee, last few times we've met, we've been working on the driveway permit because the old one was just, hadn't been touched for several years, so this is, there's really not much substantive change in it. It's just more of a formatting change, but yeah. So that's the new one.
Okay.
So was that street sidewalks or driveways?
Well, the driveway permit is part of that ordinance. It's run by that ordinance. So when the ordinance changed, the permit needed to also.
Okay. I didn't realize that.
So when I did briefly discuss this with the select board, Joe Donardo asked that we also look at, in that same ordinance, the widths in four driveways to see if they're wide enough for some of the new first responder vehicles.
The application says the person, and the ordinance is that they shall follow the B-Trans standards. So with the permit that you have there are the B-Trans standards, which does say how wide a driveway must be.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if there's really anything you can do with that other than saying it's making sure people are doing that. That's the...
Maybe getting rid of what's in the ordinance.
Well, it says to follow the B-Trans standards. That's what it is.
There was something about 12 feet, too.
That's 12 feet minimum, 24 feet maximum. That's...
That is still the standard?
Yeah, I just, this is, this is, this is the updated one, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, maybe just a reference.
Yeah.
We'll add in the ordinance.
So the whole first section of the ordinance, section, section one is driveways, and it's...
And there is some enforcement in here.
Oh, yeah.
I think there was some discussion by our group whether it had enforcement or whether it needed to be beefed up. So that's another thing we can look at.
So in the, in the new permit, one of the things that was added was approximate width of the driveway to be installed. So we're making them give us approximation of how wide they're doing it, just to double check that it's correct.
Also, yeah, I mean, it also helps you check that if they lived up to the, met the representations.
Yep.
Plus, it would have to be minimum 12 before you would accept the application.
Right.
And there was one other thing in here, section 2.05, "No town actions other than select board vote constitutes acceptance." I thought you maybe want to look at that.
That, well, that's popped a few times when, that's for... Most recently, Carmel Place wanted us to take over that private road, the new town road.
Right.
And that's basically saying it must take an affirmative action by the board to do that. And nothing, no other, thank you for the application, no other action of accepting anything other than a board vote means you're accepted. So that's there just to say, just because you gave us everything on the list, doesn't mean we're taking it over. That's why it's there. That's a specific to, to, that way, nothing can be confused with acceptance other than a board vote.
Okay. So, yeah, so that's something the Highway Committee definitely wants left in there.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had some questions.
Okay. So we'll have a little more time to look this over and probably in our meeting on the 22nd.
It was something I did bring up at the last meeting about excavation in the right of way, and maybe that's something we can add as a section because we have an excavation permit, but we don't have an ordinance that, or a section of an ordinance that gives any depth to that.
And what would that be, excavation?
Utilities, installing, we, we had an issue where a utility did not come to us for a permit and dug across somebody's front yard, sliced up somebody's cable line underground and took off. So it's been everything taken care of, but, but, but that all includes homeowners, utilities, you know, they're, they're different. We have a permit for it, but we should have something that gives some definitions and some, and some enforcement behind the two, so.
So is excavation, if some, if I'm getting cable TV service, is that considered excavation, running the line?
Want to bury the line?
Yeah.
Along the right of way? Absolutely it is.
Oh, along the right of way, but?
Yeah. So like, what's, what's common right now is consolidated is, has several permits they've done for installing fiber optic underground, and they come to us and they get a permit when they're, when they're boring under the road and whatnot. Because if something happens to the roadway, because of that, they're, they're responsible for it, so.
Is there mention in here made of dig safe, if they have to go through dig safe?
There is, dig safe does not, those two words do not exist together in any of our ordinances or permits. We don't, we don't require it, so, and, and a lot of utilities do that. Like when we had the work done here at the office, they came and marked it out. It isn't that happens, but that's not because of anything we require.
When have other folks put that language in or put that requirement? Other towns?
Brandon, Brandon has one. It's, it's a road opening ordinance. And it's been around for a while. It references installing telegraph lines. So probably hasn't been updated for a little bit, but, but that's, that's the only one I can find directly around here, but... Yeah, that would, that would probably be something that we could add a section to the streets and sidewalks with the excavation. That would be, that would be helpful.
Okay. Let's move down to old business. And up the list is the townwide celebration on the 24th. So we will need a few hands on deck that day. Dana has said he'll be there. I'll be there. I'll need Dana's help to set up an awning that we can get from Mike. And some power for the laptop. And power for the big monitor.
And he's bringing the TV, Eric.
Okay. I'm not sure what's serious and what's not serious.
So, he was the one that said to bring, bring the TV, I said he can bring his TV.
Right, right.
We do not, we don't, Mike, there's, there's no display there that we really have, but, but so.
So what would you suggest, Bill, that we rent something?
So, how are we gonna see it? Because it's a bright day, it's hard to see, but... We really don't, we really don't have anything that's, that's a portable or, you know, I have... I can probably come up with a little TV, like, like a 27 inch maybe, a smaller one that we can use, so I can, I can probably get that.
That would just be connected by USB to?
Yeah.
Somehow?
Yeah.
And do you have a spare laptop around? Hate to have somebody walk away with it.
Yeah, those are, that's what we have. We have, that's, that's, that's the town laptop, so we can, we can bring it.
All right, so, and we've got the frame for the banner. That's what I really need help with. Remember setting that up last year? So we've got that, a table. And thinking of that map, so maybe I'll go to Awesome and get it really adhered to Funkor. Nice version of that. Get an easel somewhere.
Just a suggestion, if you're gonna go to Awesome, they're so busy. Last time I went, there was a long wait, Awesome Graphics. Get something done.
Okay. Was it more than two, two or three weeks? Was it more than three weeks?
It's been a while. I just know that they were backed up.
Okay. Now, I was thinking of having some handouts that just describe a recorder, so if someone just says, well, do you have anything in writing? Have a slideshow. Can any of you, Sherman's gonna be out of town.
I'm out of town. I have, cannot, my time, eh?
So, yeah, right, Beth. Did Andy say he was going? Or was it all a joke?
I thought he said, I thought he said he was gone.
He has gone in the past. Okay. Be good just to spell each other. Okay, any other, do, I don't think we're gonna have much else. We might have something on the Vellamont Trail. We won't have anything on housing. Yeah, unless we want to put the survey out. It was done half a year ago. Um, the Pocket Park, I guess I'll bring the map just in case, but we had the map up at our, our stand at, at the townwide celebration for like three years now. And anything on the energy mini grant or that $4,000, anything you need to put on the table?
No, I mean, we're, I gotta talk about that, about what we can do. There's things we can do, we just gotta... Is there materials you want to get? We can... That's what I'm looking for. It's just sitting there, so.
All right, we'll have room at the table. Anything else we should have for folks?
That's pretty good.
Okay. Trying to remember why I added the river corridor ordinance schedule. I think I meant that we would take it up, you know, in the fall. Maybe get some input at the townwide celebration. And then this fall, get into it more seriously, start having our, our meetings. We had discussed having meetings with commercial and business people, a separate meeting there, and a separate meeting with those directly, invite those directly affected. So have some pretty focused meetings initially. And then maybe a public meeting or two after that. Once we get the ordinance worked out. That will take a little bit of time, but I'm thinking we may want the, to get some of the landowners in beforehand. Show them a rough draft. And just get serious about this in September and October.
So would you do landowners before the commercial? I mean, it could, it could be a mixture.
In, in my head, it was always commercial first because I thought we would have, I didn't think there'd be much pushback or anything from commercial people. Because we're mostly looking at, we're mostly looking at folks along here. Otter Creek and Clarendon River. But I, I don't know. What do you guys think?
The way you said it, I wasn't sure which, which you had in mind. I, I have the same feeling that you do, that it'd be much easier to, to discuss it with the commercial people and to just see what, what issues may come up, but they'd probably be more substantial because there would maybe some, some impact to the business or the business operation that they're, they're concerned about.
And it would be great if we could get some to, you know, support it, go on record of supporting it. The, the private landowners are gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit trickier because it's, it includes all the small streams for a number of them. I think there was like a dozen or 14 would be affected by small streams.
These are people who's either home outside building, separate from the home garage, barn, et cetera, are already in the corridor.
Well, no, the list of, of addresses that we have are, are just properties. I'm gonna think now. I think, I thought they were just properties in, in the river corridor that had parcels. But you may be right, Norm, that it did include the primary residence, not, not the, not, you know, not sheds and things like that, auxiliary.
But it's those people who will be impacted because if they're, they don't have sheds, they won't be able to build them hereafter once we have the ordinance. Sheds or garages or other outbuildings across 50 feet of the...
Of the small stream.
Small stream. Off the side from the rivers.
From the rivers, it's, it's...
Or creeks.
It's no closer to the river than they've already put structures.
Those are the ones I had in mind that could no longer expand.
They can. They just, you know, they just have to do it, you know, on the same attitude or whatever. And they just couldn't, they could develop, here's a house and they want to put a barn in. They could do it like that with the river being right there, but they couldn't put the barn closer to the river than the house. Have to be even or...
And if they don't have any outbuilding, if they have... Could you, could you speak up just a little, Norm, please? I'm sorry. My, my understanding is there couldn't be... Well, I think we're just looking at it the same thing from a different way. It will restrict additional construction within certain distances of either the stream or the creek or the river. And those distances vary on whether it's a stream or creek or the river.
There's just, there's just the river corridor and small streams, just two categories.
But if they're big enough law and their dwelling was way back from it, they still could probably put something closer to the river long as they're, they're within the meet the criteria. I mean, to say that they can't go any closer than a dwelling, again, if they're...
Right, and any existing structure that they have.
Yeah, it's the distance of the...
Yeah.
I'm, I'm attempting to say it also. So it, it, there's a restriction only if the dwell, if what is being, being proposed to, to build is within a certain distance from the stream.
The ordinance, you know, as, as the state would like to see it, says, you know, we prefer, you know, it's really preferred that there be no development in the river corridor or in the small stream buffers, 25 feet on each side.
Right.
But if you have to do development or, 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 you know, you really have a need for it, it should be either, they call it infill, but that's level or the same level as an existing structure, or they call it shadow. It's, it's behind the, the structure.
Okay. So if, so if you have a house, if you have a house standing alone and you want to build either a garage or a barn and you're in the small stream corridor, you can't put it, and your house is already within the 25 feet, where do you put the, where can you build?
That would be a question for DEC.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
That would be a question for DEC. I think, I can only speculate what the answer is, would be, is like, they would prefer nothing in that buffer.
25 feet.
Each side.
I think the thing we'll need to make clear is that we can't require you to move anything that exists.
Right.
Make that, you know, our opening statement. Because I think some people will fear that.
Yeah.
And by definition, if you're in the corridor, you're within that 25 foot distance from the corridor.
The, the river corridor itself varies. You know, they've, they've looked at what the river has done over time. So it may be 25 feet, it may be 100 feet in places.
Okay, well, whatever it happens to be at that spot, it only, these, this, this new... I'm at a loss for word for what it is.
Yeah, it'd be an ordinance.
The new ordinance, only, it only addresses those, anything within that corridor.
Right.
Not, if it's, if the corridor is 30 feet, so anything that's 35 feet is not addressed here.
Right.
That's, just because we, you have to go back to the definition of the corridor. Because otherwise, if you just say it, it sounds like any, wherever you are on your property.
Right, which is not the case.
So it's, it's within the corridor, which is a certain, is what we find.
Yeah, and you can see, I mean, it's the, the pink in that map over there, so it's... You know, in, in our areas, some rivers, some rivers have really meandered over time. So the river corridors, you know, they set a, a pretty wide of a corridor. But I wouldn't consider, I wouldn't consider anything up there as really wide, except maybe in the Otter Creek over here, which, which does meander.
Yes.
So when was the last update on the, on the map?
Um... They did new maps when I first started working on this, about 2017, but I think they've updated them, but I, I can't give you a date. They, I, I think with the new LiDAR that they have now, it's, it's a very, very clear type of radar. I, I think they've updated the map since then, but I can find out.
What you, what you just spoke about, the meandering of rivers has, I think has caused some issues with the mapping process because unless they actually get out there and survey those areas that have a tendency to wander, the old maps are, are out of date in those respects.
Yeah, you know, I, I just spoke about late LiDAR, but I think in making the river corridors, they mostly use historical maps, aerial maps of what, you know, of what rivers look like.
See, the, I was on the select board in Royalton when the first FEMA maps hit over there because we, we were a priority area on the White River there. And the first maps were issued in the late 60s, early 70s, and that's what we drew our ordinance from. And lots changed since then.
Right, right. A lot has changed probably in the last year.
That brings up another point. I believe that they need to take a real look at the classification of the 50-year flood, the 100-year flood, and the 500-year flood.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, you know, with the legislation, the act that passed, which is going to take several years of public meetings and discussions like that, that that will be one of the topics, and that they may be updating the maps. And, and I believe in the ordinance, there's language that whenever the state does update maps, our maps, if we had an ordinance, would, would match those.
It would be nice if they could do the whole state together, but I don't think that's practical. I think they're gonna...
FEMA can do that.
They're gonna have to hit the areas that are, you know, ripe for what we're seeing today up in the Northeast.
Yeah, I know, some, some areas that are at a higher priority than we are.
Right.
Bill, did you have a?
The date on the maps that we have that are available online are 2008.
Right, those are the FEMA maps. Yeah. These, the river corridor was done, that, that legis, the first river quarter length, river quarter legislation passed in 2016, I believe, and went into effect shortly after that.
Just so I don't slow things down with foolish questions while we're talking about the ordinance, I want to be clear on one thing. When we're talking about the river corridor, we're talking about the bed of the river itself and not the width of the area that's protected.
We're talking about the area that's protected. In some cases, that area is not even wet, you know, at times. In some, in some cases, the river hasn't like meandered that way in like 50 years or something, but it did 50 years ago.
So the corridor is the river plus the protected area?
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
That's the same problem I was having with.
But it's not like the small streams where it's like 25 feet, you know, just straight up. It, if you look at that, and, you know, some banks, it goes really wide, and other banks, it may even be less than like 25 feet, you know?
So...
If there's a rock ledge there or something.
So we've talked about creeks, and that's what I was basically talking about, is the riverbed plus the protected area. When we talk about streams, is it the same thing, the, the stream plus the protected area?
It is, it is strictly a buffer, a buffer of a distinct width on both sides.
Both sides of the...
Yeah, so it just goes right up and down. It doesn't have like bulges or bends in it or anything.
So in some places, it may be six inches and plus some places it may... So, so, in some places, it may be six inches, and plus some places, it may be twenty-five feet.
That would be a River Corridor.
That'd be a River Corridor.
The, the streams, all the little streams on the map there, it, the buffer is, is really narrow, it's twenty-five feet on each side. That's it.
Wait a minute, huh?
Yeah.
I'll talk to you later, I see.
Okay.
Okay, I thought I understood it, then I think I got confused again.
If you look at the, the math, Norm.
But I'm colorblind, so.
Oh, you, you can't tell the difference?
Yeah.
But it's just different from, from River, River Corridors are different from streams.
Yes.
And the buffer, the way the buffer is defined, is identified, I guess, is different.
So the, the buffer on the creek bed, the buffer around the creeks, meanders with the creek, but the buffer.
The opposite, nope, the opposite. It, it, I mean, it kinda depends what you mean, um, it's, it's a very, it's a defined width going up and down small streams.
Yes.
As they, as they move right now, as, as they're mapped right now, it's very defined. Whereas with a River Corridor, because it's taking a more historical view, it's, they're bigger, and they have meandered, that, that buffer, if you will, can bulge out in places, or can be much wider.
That's what I was trying to say.
Okay, okay, alright, we're on the same page. Any other questions? Okay, the State Housing Study Grant Update, um, that is, um, we were talking about going for a, a municipal planning grant, uh, the new rules and application are not ready yet. So there's really, uh, nothing to talk about with Logan yet, until those are available. And it may be kind of a abbreviated application period, so, um, we'll, we'll keep an eye on that, and Logan will take care of that. But he'll also come talk to us as soon as he gets some information. The East Pittsford Road, we talked about that last time, the temporary driveway. Uh, I, 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 I just contacted, uh, Kim Luchko at the Act Two-Fifty, just to get an update. Because everything stopped, all the activity up there had stopped, and she, she told me that she had been working, you know, Bill's been working with this, uh, landowner too, but she had been working with him on his application for, um, an amended Act Two-Fifty. It hadn't, you know, we're not talking about being approved yet, the landowner had the, you know, go through the Act Two-Fifty amendment process, and she said they had several meetings, and she thought uh, they were productive and everything, she was quite surprised that anything had been done at the site. And then she talked about, well, maybe it needs to go to enforcement and compliance at this point. So I think it might be in that arena. So, I don't know if you've had any correspondence with the landowner recently? And, and, um, I, I, I think the temporary driveway that was, um, permitted by the town may not be up to Act, Act Two-Fifty snuff either, so, so we'll hear more as we go forward. And I, and I, uh, mentioned to Dave during a slick board meeting that, you know, whenever he had any questions about things, you know, you know, feel free to, to even virtually come talk to us about this stuff, and, you know, how, you know, you, you Howard knew, as soon as you, as soon as we identified the parcel, you knew immediately, it was in the nineteen seventy-five Act of Fifty subdivision there. And, and that there were going to be issues. So, hopefully Dave will take us up on that, and hopefully we'll get like the fire chief in, um, you know, and maybe we should invite him in about maybe the, the driveway widths, and that, and that discussion next time. Note to self.
There may be other considerations also, just where the driveway is, not just the width.
It might not be a bad idea to consider the, uh, regional ambulance people too, because they have a huge presence in Rotten Town.
Okay.
I know all about it.
You still doing that work?
I, I've had several rides.
Okay. So, we're not gonna have much of a, a, a long meeting tonight. Because we're misquestioned, but does anyone have any announcements? Bill, anything that you haven't told us already? Okay, so you gave us two sets of minutes. We, the June twentieth set.
Oh, well, you had, you had June twentieth on here, which I sent out, but I'm like, oh, that's what you actually.
Oh, 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 I didn't change the agenda.
So, yeah, the July eleventh ones are the ones that are, but I, I, I sent them along, because you had it on there, I'm like, I think it was July eleventh, so.
Sorry about that.
It looks strange.
So, yeah, we are looking at July eleventh minutes. And, let's see, do we have enough people here to? Yes, there are four people that were present that are here tonight.
Yeah, we don't have enough people.
I think we do.
Well.
We've got Howard, we've got you, we've got Jim and myself.
What, seven people present?
Well, we just need four to vote on it tonight, and four who were there.
Even though Jim didn't vote during the meeting.
He was, he.
Present, but he, he was the eighth person present. And if.
Boy, we need a parliamentarian.
I'm not, I just don't want us to do it if it's not right, you know, if it's not appropriate.
He's a non-voting member, he, for that meeting, so we're, he's a, we're considering him as a voting member this meeting. He, he was, you heard, you were, you were, you were present, right, at the meeting? I think we're good.
Well, I'm not gonna challenge the chair on that this time. It's fine. I just, I just wanted to be clear on it, um, I thought it was people who were voting at the meeting. Uh, that's been our, that's my sense of our prior practice, but let's just go ahead.
If that's the case, we should change it. If that's the case, we should change it.
Yeah.
Because Jim heard the whole meeting. He's actually, you know, in attendance. So, um, anyone wanna make a motion for these minutes?
A move that we approve the minutes of the July eleventh meeting.
Thanks, Howard. Any discussion? Norm, it looked pretty good.
It looked good to me, yeah. I didn't have any corrections.
Oh, okay, okay, all those in favor of the minutes for July eleventh? Uh, the, of the four people that were there?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.
I abstained, yes.
One abstention.
May it work.
Okay. Bill's going on vacation, starting tonight, starting tomorrow?
I can do the minutes for the meeting tomorrow, so.
Oh, sorry. Anything else? A motion to adjourn?
A move that be adjourned.
We're adjourned.